Whenever you're ready, Mr. Chair.
All right. Welcome, everyone, to the City of Lakewood Planning Commission Meeting Wednesday, May 7th, 6:30. Let's go ahead and get started. Calls meeting to order. We don't have, oh, let's jump into, Ms. Deveraux, you want to do attendance for us? Thank you.
Robert Estrada.
Here.
Mark Herr.
Present.
Lynn Larson is absent at this time. Philip Lindholm.
Here.
Ellen Talbot.
Present.
Sharon Wallace.
Present.
And Philip Coens.
Present.
You have quorum.
Thank you very much. Any changes to the agendas outlined today?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, thanks. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting? Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
You have those?
Yes, go ahead.
I'll ask for the names. I'll give them to you if you want them. Let's see here. No agenda updates, public comment. We don't have any.
Correct.
Anyone present and no public hearing business to go on, no unfinished business because we were so efficient last time. So let's jump right into our new business, six-year transportation improvement plan. Mr. Troy, I'm going to let you go ahead and tell me how to say that last name, so I don't do it wrong.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. It's Pock Swinski. Pock's like chicken pox, win and ski. It looks more, he looks more kind of dangerous than it actually is.
It's just like it's just like a spell.
Yeah, exactly. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate your time this evening. I'm here, Troy Pock Swinski, Capital Projects Division Manager for the City of Lakewood, to present to you the six-year tip, kind of give you an update on the annual update to the tip that we do. It's a document that we use to not only plan, but primarily to go ahead and go after grants for this. This year's version is the 2026 through 2031 tip. We've got four deletions and four additions. We'll kind of go through those a little bit here. The preamble of this tip is a lot about revenue sources that are, you know, they go up and down a little bit, but for the most part, they've stayed pretty stagnant for the last couple of years. Our grant sources are pretty much the same year in and year out as we go through it. We have roughly thirty, or excuse me, forty roadway projects, including the four we've added, or excuse me, two roadway projects we've added this year. They're, those are in the blue. I believe they're on sheets seven through probably about eleven here. The last, yep, the last two projects are the projects we've added from council comments that we've had in the past couple of months. The Gravely Lake Drive portion of sidewalk between Pacific Highway and Nianza, there's a small segment of sidewalk on the west side of the street there. Doesn't have sidewalk there. Washdott is about ready to connect the Gravely Thorne Connector to that side. They're out to bid with that. I believe they're opening bids this week or next week, so they'll start construction on that later this year. So we would like, and it does land in that intersection, so we'd like to kind of continue that one little 600-foot segment. That's primarily a right-of-way project. I have it listed for about $750,000 and about $650,000 of that 750 is purchasing property for that sidewalk. Next project we have is Nianza Park Drive from Nianza Drive or Nianza Road all the way to Clover Creek Drive. That's about two and, oh, about two and a half, two and a quarter to two and a half million dollars for that project. It'd be curb-gutter sidewalk on both sides. What we have it estimated for, but with trees, we might be looking at other, you know, various options, whether that's a path on one side or whatnot. As we get closer to, you know, funding this and we look into the design of it a little bit better, but just judging upon the aerials, and if you've driven that street, there's a lot of oaks and other things that we may want to just avoid. So something to talk to council about as we move forward on that. That's the roadway segment. Up next to the traffic signals, we have seven traffic signals listed there. A couple of them are tied with the roadway projects, the Holden and Military section, as well as the Custer and 88th, I believe, is tied to a roadway as Gravely Avondale would be with the Green Street Loop. This segment is the transportation planning, what we do for our pavement, kind of our pavement evaluations, PCIs, as we call them. We do it every four years. We budget $50,000. This year will be one of the four years, so, yep, moving forward with that. Next segment up is our structural, our bridges. We do inspections every other year. And then we have one segment that we might take care of as part of the Nianza project as we're moving along. It's a, it's a guardrail repair on Clover Creek. It's been kicking on the tip for at least five or six years. Something we need to look at. This is the roadway restoration project. We had the bottom two on this list are adds. As we start moving from a lot of our projects kind of falling off of the roadway side, we need to start putting maintenance, particularly for grant funding. The top two projects on here are the patching and the chip seal kind of annual maintenance. That 150th Street section doesn't score real well on grants, so we've added the 112th, or excuse me, the Pacific Highway from the railway bridge to 108th, and then, not certain where that says 100, yeah, it should say 96th, not 112th, from South Tacoma Way to Steel Street. Something's not quite right there on that. I might need to edit that. Last slide here, or not the last slide, then is a neighborhood traffic safety control plan, or the neighborhood traffic safety. We budget about $27,000 to $30,000 a year for speed bumps, speed studies, that type of stuff. And this last slide is the kind of the summary of projects we've added and projects we have not yet added. Any questions you guys may have for me?
Council member, or Commissioner.
Thank you, sir, for the, for the presentation. The added projects, are these already approved and just waiting for grant funding to come along, or are these already financed and just pending starts?
Yeah, none of these are financed at all, and they're brand new to.
So this, so in the grant process, this is where they would look to see what we're trying to get grant approvals for.
Correct. Yeah, we would, we would be looking for grants for these projects.
Thank you.
Commissioner Estrada?
Thank you, Chair. Pock Swinski?
Yes, good job.
Thank you, thank you. Regarding the funding sources, you say that it's normal, no changes, but I wonder, has the, our current administration moved to eliminate or modify any of the two major sources, federal, that is, the Raise, Build, Tiger, and especially the second one, since Biden's infrastructure investment and everything that has the name Biden name is being cut, it seems like, right now. So I worry whether those two are going to be on the chopping block or modification, and so how is that going to affect?
So while none of that is guaranteed, that the FAST Act, the Biden Act, has really been around since 2009, 2011. It's, it's, it's been through a couple administrations here and there. That's the traditional infrastructure grant that is annual, or excuse me, we get it semi-annually, by, if we get it biannually every other year. That does not appear to be going away. The Raise has been renamed Build, as the Raise has been, the E in Raise is Equity, and that's been a source subject. But we just did indeed get that Raise grant this last year for, as you guys are probably well aware, for the downtown transportation study, feasibility study out here. And while they held our grant for three or four weeks, it did pass through. That being said, in that same pot of money, we have heard from other jurisdictions that they have gotten theirs axed. So it is, but the City of Lakewood's portion has gone through. So at this time, we've gone through on the transportation study. Moving forward, it's anybody's guess what that's going to do. It has to be reappropriated by Congress and then signed by the executive.
Thank you. Thank you. That's helpful. We also have Commissioner Talbot has her hand up. Can we, can we free her?
She's able to unmute.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks, Troy. I wanted to ask about, will you guys be applying for PSRC's annual FHWA call for projects for any of the projects in the tip?
Yes, every, we get them every other year through the countywide competition. We don't score very well on the regional stuff. Traditionally, we don't have projects typically big enough, but we do go in countywide, and we will, the next call for the countywide is in 2026, and we will go in count for that, particularly for 100th Street, which is 3020136, as well as some of the overlay projects. Usually, it's one of the two new overlay projects that we're pitching, and I see that the, one of the two new overlay projects did not make the list. It's 96th Street from South Tacoma Way to, to Steel, well, it's not quite to Steel Street, it's to I-5, where the eastern city limit is. So one of those two, depending on which one scores the best for the criteria, and the reason why we don't know which one yet is because it's a 2026 call and we don't know what the criteria is yet.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. And then regarding traffic, neighborhood traffic, calming and safety, that I'm aware of, I don't, I don't know that Lakewood has a vision, adopted Vision Zero Plan, or, but I was wondering and wanting to ask, what is the city's, I guess, temperature or interest in the Safe Streets For All program?
So the, the grant call that just came out, I believe, Tiffany, you were the one who kind of spearheaded this, brought this to our attention, is for specifically the Safe Streets For All for a, either a study or for implementation, or a study and implementation. Since the city doesn't currently have a safety plan, we had, we had a safety, somewhat of a safety plan, but not a comprehensive one that would be scoring very well in this program. We do not intend to go out at this time, at least not from the Capitol side, for anything for implementation, because we don't have anything that would score well with that. We would have to use PSRC's current safety plan, and with that, we don't have any of our projects kind of meld well with that implementation-wise. Planning may or may not decide to pursue some of that for a, for a safety study related to on-street parking, but I couldn't answer that question.
The application is due by June 26th, so we still have to have some internal conversation about that, Ms. Talbot.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I just, I would only add that from discussion in and around PSRC often, and even, even up in King County, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty well-known that those federal funds have often been under-appplied for. So if you, so like now, this is the, I think this is the last round of that six years of funding, so this is a good time to apply for funds to have, to create that action plan, if, if, you know, if you're inclined. So I just wanted to add that. The other last question I have was regarding the Interlock and Bridge. I didn't see it in the tip, but I could have just mis-scrolled. Aside from the bridge inspection, is there any more work to be completed or programmed in the tip regarding repairs or up, upgoing, ongoing upkeep to the Interlock and Bridge?
Not specifically to Interlock and Bridge, as we took care of a lot of that under the emergency repair last year. We replaced all of the deteriorated wooden members that needed to be replaced, with the exception of, there's various categories of deterioration, and we have six piles of the, what is it, 456 piles that we have out there, six show deterioration in what would be considered, if you were going A through F, like a deterioration B with FB and failing, you know, you're starting to slide down to something above the waterline only. So it's not anything that's anywhere close to critical. It's something we should probably take care of in the next five to 10 years. It's not anything on the list that we've got. No grant funding is available for it, so it's not something that we're actively wanting to place on the tip now. In addition to that, we do have a study going out this summer for, as part of the council's priorities, to study what to do with Interlock and Bridge, whether to make it one-way, or whether to, you know, close it completely. It's just something that they want to investigate. So we will kind of bring some options forth and then do a public outreach on that as well this summer. So that would pretty well solve Interlock and Bridge, but we did replace a good chunk of Interlock and Bridge's structural members last summer, so it's in very good shape, I would say.
Great. Thank you very much.
One more.
One more. Back to funds, regarding the motor vehicle fuel tax funds. So if our governor signs the proposed, yes, increases by six, seven cents, I believe, when will that, if it, if, in fact, it becomes law, when in fact does that take effect, and when we will be able to take advantage of it?
So a good portion of that, as you can well, well aware, goes directly to the state. It doesn't trickle down. A very small portion of it may trickle down, but a good portion of that. I don't know the dates that it would be effective, to be honest with you. As soon as it kind of said, okay, there's a little bit of crumbs here and there, is, you know, maybe five to 10% of that amount may trickle down, and we, we get a good chunk of our grant funds through that program, through the TIB, which would where it'd be trickled down from. It would be a couple of years out, would be before we actually physically start seeing any money on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Troy. Appreciate your help and work on this and all the outside money and grants you're getting. We really applaud that. That's great.
Thank you.
All right. Status update on natural, environment, and climate change.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will now share this one. All right, one second. Wrong thing, so give me a second. So I believe you may have noticed on your work plan for 2025, commissioners, the, the mention of what was called the Natural Environment and Climate Change Program. This is actually not a new program. This is a name that I coined a few months ago now. This has been vetted through the city council, but the idea here is we are taking a number of either required or encouraged or just city-adopted initiatives and goals and priorities, and pulling them from their various sections of code or wherever they came from, and bringing them into an implementation process that's unified. So you'll see the graphic on the right, trying to summarize everything. This is incorporating climate change, the collection and use of, of data that gets collected, what's being called a climate, climate, climate. I'm going to be, it's a P advisory team, thank you, and then trees. So all of those things are informing this NECC program. There have been, in the past few years, some of you were around to review these things, a number of things adopted by the city back in 2021 was the original Energy and Climate Change Chapter added to the comprehensive plan, and then there was an 89-item Action Plan adopted, and then that was honed down in 2022 to have 15 action items that were prioritized. Now, we've since then also had new direction coming from the state government saying you have to do a number of changes to your comprehensive plan and accompanying regulations by 2029, specifically related to climate change, resiliency, and planning. And then we also have the city having adopted over the last few years, a 40% canopy cover by the year 2050, as well as a direction from council to launch an urban forestry program. So all of these things, again, are coming together into what is being proposed here, and we're just in the starting phases. This is really just an update to you of, of where we're at internally with this process. So if you were to look at the three-year action plan that again was adopted in '22 and is expiring regardless, just given its sunset date, out of those 15, nine are completed, four are ongoing, and you'll see those highlighted, and then the two that are fully highlighted are the ones that haven't started yet for various reasons. There are also other existing required involuntary actions that would be incorporated into the NECC program. Once more, the citywide tree canopy and working with agencies, organizations, nonprofits, volunteers to encourage people to plant on their own private property. Urban forestry programs, for the most part, are really dealing with public rights of way and publicly-owned property. So voluntary pre-tree planting on private property would also help the city achieve that citywide canopy cover goal. Again, creating the urban forestry program, there's a lot of internal stand-up of process that needs to occur, but also then the outreach to the general public and subject matter experts to help with that is needed. The 89 action items I just mentioned from the Climate Change Action Plan, and then what's kind of been termed House Bill 1181 requirements, those are pretty significant by the end of 2029. And if you think back to the 25 comp plan process, there were three chapters that were reviewed by a consultancy named EXP, and they found that our utilities, our capital facilities, and our parks plan were all already compliant with HB 1181. And that's why when you adopted your resolution last time about the comp plan package, there was that one amendment that didn't need to go forward because everything had already been satisfied under 1181. As far as greenhouse gas emissions go, there are both a state and then a Puget's on regional council set of emissions goals, and so those are things that the city also needs to be consistent with in its planning. And then there's just been an ongoing push and desire both for energy efficiency in city operations. So again, all of these things are coming together. And so in a graphic form, you'll see it over on the right-hand side, once again, this idea of addressing trees and improving the quality of life, particularly for folks that are in an area with less trees right now. There's climate change issues, flooding, as well as heat island effect, as well as, again, tree canopy for health. There's collecting data, some of which we already have in hand. There was that 2024 big forest assessment report that you heard about a few meetings ago, as well as the heat watch report that was conducted last year in partnership with the Health Department. We have our equity index map for the city that covers environmental issues as well as housing and employment issues. And then we have, again, this idea of the climate policy advisory team that will be not only dealing specifically with this program, but some other work probably going forward beyond the life in 2029 of what we're currently considering. So once again, this is not something that would be new policy strategies or actions. It's a way to consolidate and make it more efficient internally for city staff. But also importantly, this is not a program that would be housed only in planning and public works. It's something that will require and benefit from Parks Recreation, Communications, the Legal Department, and even the Police Department in some respects, helping out in implementation. And so coupled with that, we also have the Parks Legacy Plan, which was last adopted in 2020, is getting updated this year. That's their recreation and open space plan. And so that will be happening concurrent with some of this work, but will be partnering with city staff in that department for that process. And then we also have ongoing the Pierce County Hazard Mitigation Plan Development, and that will be something that the city adopts along with the county in the near future. So how are we going to do all of this? Where's the money coming from? We have already $190,000 that was identified by the city council out of our American Rescue Plan Act funds. Those must be spent by December 1st of next year, and so there will, I'm sure, be no problem using those funds by that point, but they are targeted specifically to our urban forestry program. Then the third bullet item there you'll see is the city's ongoing tree fund. This is something that is replenished through fee-in-lue options that a developer might make on a project, and also when you have code enforcement issues and fines. So it's built up over time and is now at about $474,000. Those funds, there is no time limit for when they have to be spent, but the idea is they would go toward the, the launch of the urban forestry program in the near term, and then maybe be used for other items going forward. And then the middle one is the Commerce Grant. We did receive and use only about $30,000 of it over the last two years to do work that culminated in finding, again, our parks, our capital facilities, and our utilities elements were good to go. The lion's share of this work is, again, responsive to House Bill 1181, Climate Change and Resiliency Planning that's now required. And so right now, with the way the state budget was, I think, just finalized, there is no funding available for us until January, sorry, July of 2027. But then by the mid-2029 date, we need to have all of the work done. So trying to strategically use those funds, ARPA dollars will be used first, and then city tree fund dollars over the next biennium, and then we'll be accessing the Commerce Grant once it's available in 2027. So what would be included on a work plan? First of all, the remaining items out of that three-year plan from a few years ago, which is, again, related to greenhouse gas emissions, partnering with the county and other cities to deal with climate change in a regional way, continuing to partner within South Sound Military and Communities Partnership for the improvements down at the Nisqually Delta to I-5. I can't remember if this has been really discussed much at the Planning Commission, but there has been knowledge on the Nisqually tribes' part, and now more so in Washdott as well, that because of the way the bridges in particular in I-5, right at that boundary of the counties, has limited how the river can move and around, it has become more and more stressed, and there is a real threat of overtopping at some point of I-5. And so the tribe for its own priorities, especially fish, fish recovery, coupled with military concerns for safety and ability to move when they need to, and then SSMCP is just ongoing prioritization of military and civilian compatibility. All of those things have come together, and there is currently millions of dollars set aside in the state budget for this work, and the federal lobbying continues as well. Then we have just ongoing all the time, looking at our building code Title 15 to make sure it is updated, and now not only looking at hazards, but specifically climate change hazards, looking at electric vehicle infrastructure, and then once more that idea of an urban forestry plan. There's also 74 more items out of that 2021 plan that haven't been touched yet. And so what we're thinking is that those will be addressed by the Climate Policy Action Team early on to do a prioritization of those remaining items and figure out which ones to tackle first. So first two years, 25 to 27, create this advisory team, look again at those 74 items, and then launching the urban forestry. Look again at those 74 items and then launching the urban forestry program, tracking how successful the canopy cover increases are, both on public and private properties, and tracking our greenhouse gas emission, uh, either success or failure, uh, decrease or increase via the tools that the city's been using since 2022. 2027 to 29, that's when we are going to have access to those funds again. So this is where the H B 1181 stuff's going to kick back in. And this will require, uh, updates to the climate change and resiliency element we just adopted to the land use element. Uh, there will be, um, significant changes in the transportation world, both the demand forecast model that is used and the element within our comprehensive plan. And then there will also be down here, these last three, an urban heat resiliency strategy needed. And, uh, coming up with planting plans for municipal projects using native and climate resilient plants. And then continuing to update and maintain our urban forestry program. So working on all of this, um, within the next year and until we get that next big bucket of funds from the state, we're really focusing on the climate policy advisory team and launching the urban forestry program with those funds that we have access to now. And so more to come as we get going on that, but just letting you know that that's where we are status-wise. And happy to answer any questions if you've got them.
Mr. Estrada.
So the administration's plan to eliminate two key environmental protection agency divisions, the climate change and energy efficiency, including Energy Star, that adversely affects our approved climate action plan. Isn't it?
What I am referring to here are all state level requirements. So even if federal agencies or federal programs are cut by the current administration, Washington State is moving ahead with its own laws. What may affect us is funding available to do the work if what's been happening historically is federal dollars filtered through and funnelled through the state to the locals. Um, but as of now, the state budgets and the state's, um, planning agencies haven't changed any of these requirements or the timeframe for them.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, um, Ms. Wallace.
Yes, hello. When do you anticipate having more details about, uh, the urban forestry program on private lands?
Uh, well, the program is probably going to just say, this is what we are going to work on, um, within the city's authority on public properties. And then we'll start to develop with that policy advisory team, how to engage with private property owners, residents, businesses, whomever they may be. And it'll really be a call to action and work with volunteers on how to, um, kickstart some private property actions.
A couple of comments on that. Um, we, uh, my husband and I have, uh, four and a half acres and we have, uh, about 2.8 that we are working on recreating an urban forest at our expense we've been doing. We have about 200 plants. I've been growing them. We've been growing them. And so one of the things that we want to know is kind of where do we go? One of the big inhibiting factors is, um, water and taxes. And so for your consideration, uh, if there were ways to mitigate some of those things, that would help speed up the process. We don't mind. We have the land. We, we don't mind using it for that purpose, for example. And there may be others because there are big pieces of property in Lakewood where there are owners who may feel that way. But if we could look at some sort of incentives like that, it would help further the process and, um, and maybe help you achieve your, some of the goals at less expense. And everybody would benefit. The property owners would as well as the city.
Yeah. And where we're at with, um, that policy advisory team is that they will probably convene multiple options, uh, uh, opportunities to hear from the public about what do you need, what do you want? So as the program moves into actually implementation, it's going to be informed with outreach.
But that would be very helpful to have that information, please. Thank you.
Thank you. A, a great idea. I, I think about the goal that we have. It's not achievable. Uh, we don't have the land. And we knew that. That's why we didn't approve. That's why we didn't make that recommendation in the first place. Um, but it came back and we were told it's going to be 40 and the, the behind it, it was, well, it's just a goal. Um, but if it's just a goal and we're still trying to achieve it, how do we get there? And that is a great way of incentivizing potentially. If there was a policy that could come up, maybe it is achievable because now you have more land that was private that converts into something else or in, in some kind of incentive. I, I'm curious to see what comes out of that. I, I am curious about the, uh, uh, is it a policy team or is it a committee that you're thinking to organize for this new?
It is a team, the co, the, uh, climate policy advisory team. And it's going to be subject matter experts. So it could be a professor from a college. It could be, um, an urban forester, you know, certified obrist. It could be, um, property owners of whatever ilk. It's, it's going to be a rounded, probably about 15 people, we're thinking on the group. And their initial focus will be on the urban forestry program, but we're envisioning this group to be kind of a standing new, uh, I don't want to call it a committee, but a board or whatever for the city, um, that will over time address a number of different environmental related topics.
I, and I, I appreciate that you said that because, uh, I think larger is probably good if it's going to be replacing one small thing and one spot, you know, let's make it a really good group. Um, the diversity of that group is going to be very important and specialty experts. But I would say not just specialty experts for, um, you know, forestry or urban, because they're going to have a very specific goal.
Yeah.
And so to get a great deal of diversity on there, to have business representation, small, large, you know, architect, engineer, I actually think an accountant makes a lot of sense because you can't do this stuff if you can't balance the budget and make it make sense. Um, and so just from, uh, you know, not to, not to throw, uh, not to mix it up for you, but I think for that group to be effective, it can't be all about one perspective. It has to have a collective of all different things of looking at it from different sides. And, um, so I, I appreciate you doing that and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what you come up with.
Yeah. And there's going to be a lot of outreach as we kick this off because as, as I described it at the start, this is coming out of years now of different things that the city council has ultimately done in formal action. But it's also a lot of, uh, public involvement, feedback that they've received over the years. Um, and at the same time, it's more than just trees. It is energy efficiency. It is, uh, hazard management planning. It's a number of things. And so you're absolutely right. The intention is to make this a well-rounded group of people who have, um, uh, again, subject matter expertise from wherever group they're supposed to be representing.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Wallace, do you have anything to add?
Well, I just want to add one last comment on that. And I would also include some wildlife, uh, experts if we have some because they are increasingly in those areas. And I have the luxury of having been associated with at least 10 acres now. And so we have a lot of wildlife that are, would be appropriate that, to have some experts who understand what their needs are.
Thanks.
Yeah. You, you mentioned input from Lakewood Police Department. I wouldn't be opposed to having someone represent their perspective on that because of, um, it is a very big issue, uh, and someone from the Parks Department, which was represented there. Um, my daughter, uh, cleaned up for the Parks Department. That's a, that's a big task. And our, our, that space is just going to continue to grow with this land that comes in. So, uh, if there's anything else. All right. Well, let's go ahead and, uh, dive into the last one. Planning Commission Rules of Procedure.
Yes, this was, sorry. Again, my apologies. This was included in your packet and it's, um, final thing in the document. So why I'm not finding it, I will get it open momentarily. But once upon a time, and I don't know the last time this was actually, um, looked at by anybody on the planning commission or within the city itself. Uh, there were quote, regulations and bylaws adopted for the planning commission. And when we had the changeover, uh, to this year and, uh, a number of things that were also occurring internally with our own department, it was like, hmm, maybe we should brush this stuff up. And as I started to go through them, uh, there were a number of things that were just completely out of date, including code references, calling it bylaws as opposed to rules of procedure, uh, and then also, uh, statutory references. So what you have starting on page 56 tonight is the draft. And I'm not asking for anything of a decision at all this evening. This is the start of a conversation. But the intent here is to update to current process and, um, reflecting how the planning, uh, commission currently functions. So it's all in red line strikeout, meaning the things that are underlined, even if you're looking at it in black and white, underlining means new, uh, language and cross out means removing language. So I'm just going to breeze through this at 100 miles an hour. But essentially, um, looking at calling it rules of procedure versus regulations and bylaws because they are rules for a commission that is ultimately governed by city code. Talking about, um, the prevailing rules would be, uh, the state law regarding planning agencies, the city code, uh, chapter 2.90, looking at the work plan under chapter 2.68. Um, and that is where the authority ultimately comes for what the planning commission does. No changes until we get down to, uh, the discussion of quota secretary. That's being corrected to be the planning commission clerk, and that's really a technical change. Um, it would be in our case, Karen, continuing to do what she does. Um, updating the name of the department throughout the document is here. There's no change, uh, on the election of officers if something were to happen in between the regular election process each January. Task forces, uh, no changes other than to change again the name of the secretary to clerk. Um, the meeting schedule, uh, not going to 11:00 PM, 10:00 PM is bad enough. Uh, again, more reference to the, the name of the department changing. And then when there's an issue of deliberation and the rules of procedure here, Robert's rules of order are going to prevail. And again, reference to clerk being changed from secretary, the change of the name of the department. Uh, and then there's here just the discussion that it's, uh, under municipal code chapters 2.68 for the work plan and 2.90, uh, identifying the authority of the planning commission. The city council has the authority to change those at any time. But the comments here, one change that is somewhat substantive is that in, in past times, the planning commission, as well as other advisory boards to council, would allow groups, so multiple people, um, being represented by one speaker who would then have 10 minutes as opposed to three. That is gone from all of the city, um, commissions, committees and advisory boards. So removing that from here as well. Changing the reference from citizens to residents is something again, that's a citywide change to our code language.
Ms. Spear, quick question.
Ms. Spear, um, I, I'm sure I quite understand that. Uh, I remember at city council meetings that an individual represented a group. An individual was given a time, three minutes for herself in this case, and then another three minutes for the group. Is that what it's saying here? That that's no longer applicable?
What this is saying is if a person stands up and says, I represent X organization, they are not given 10 minutes to speak. They still have three minutes. That's to be distinguished from somebody saying, I'm speaking as an individual and as the group rep. In that case, that person was given three minutes for each thing. But the group conversation, that testimony for the group was not extended to 10 minutes. It was kept at three.
It doesn't say the three here just crosses out the 10. That's what you're concerned about?
Yes.
So if an individual says, me, joke you public, as joke you public, want to make a statement, they have three minutes to do that. And then what we did with that, uh, hearing, however long ago it was, person also said, I'm also here representing a group. That group testimony was also limited to three minutes.
Do we, do we need to just memorialize it and replacing the sentence with something along those lines?
Um, you mean the sentence prior to what's crossed out?
Yeah, yeah, just replace that sentence entirely with, you know, a group will be allowed three, three minutes. Uh, and it, you know, or the leader will be allowed three minutes if, in addition to the three minutes.
Yep. We, I'm happy to do that. I'll bring it back to you next time. But the rest of this, I think, we're actually.
It looked pretty clean, huh?
Yep.
Actually.
So those are really the only changes. Uh, and so I would just ask that you review these. I will get that change we just talked about into next meetings, uh, documents for you to take a look at. And you may be ready to take action next, next time if you're ready for that.
If, if you think of any other changes you'd like to make that make sense now, if we're going through this, can you just send it before the meeting so we have a chance to look at it? Because this isn't something that I think we're going to spend a lot of time. You know, we'll be able to move on this pretty quick as long as we're not debating it in the meeting.
That's perfectly fine.
Thank you.
That was it on that one.
Well, uh, w- w- I can't, it, 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 this is, this is welcomed. Um, I know everyone is eager to stay longer, but I'm gonna see if we can go ahead and, uh, move to close this meeting. Is there anything else from, yeah?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, do you have one more, one more thing?
I shouldn't have joked.
There were, uh, several weeks ago, we had a discussion about, uh, the pledge of allegiance and beginning the meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
That's on me. I thought about that. I should have, I should have brought it up.
If it's appropriate and the correct action, I'd like to make a motion that we add the pledge of allegiance to future agendas. Um, just after a roll call and before approval of minutes.
There's no issue. We, we can do that if you want.
We just do it. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna have, ask the same thing and forgot about it. So that's great.
And we don't even need a motion for that. We can do that for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, and then, Mr. Chair, just a couple of notes really fast. Um, reminder that this month is a weird schedule. This is the only regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday night. So two weeks from tonight, you don't have a meeting. However, next Monday is the joint study session with council. So that is 7:00 PM here in the same room. They'll have their study session tables out and, um, the representative and maybe there'll be room for more of you to be up there with the council to talk. But that will also be the evening where both the M F T E, uh, amendments and the 25 comp plan package will be discussed by the council as well. So if you can make it that night, that would be great. And then the last thing in May would be.
Just, just as a reminder, I won't, I won't be there on that Monday. And Ms. Talbo, are you going to be there?
I will be there. I will be there.
Thank, thank you. If, if you guys.
Um, no meeting on the 21st, but there is the volunteer recognition event on the 28th of May. Uh, and all of you are certainly encouraged to attend. It's, it's a great event where you are given no money, no other compensation, but you are thanked for your work. Food. Yes, you are given food. And, you know, I don't want to brag, but I think you all work harder than any of the other advisor board, uh, because of, especially the things that have you been covering over the last year. You've put a lot of time and effort in and you, you deserve the recognition. So.
We do it for the pay.
I know. I know. And if I remember right, that, uh, event is being held at the Port Silicon Pavilion. So, um, you do need to RSVP online. That invitation went out to you today. And then we'll get back into other things come June 4th. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. Unless there's anything else, let's go ahead and adjourn until next meeting.